Welcome to the Saratoga Springs Planning Commission meeting for August 12th, 2021. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated. Okay, at every one of our meetings, we allow public comment. So at this time, we'll open up for public comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Oh, roll call, yes. I forgot roll call. Let me start over here. We'll do roll call. All the planning commissioners are here this evening, except for Commissioner Anderson, who was stuck in traffic, and he should be here shortly. So because he is not here yet, we're going to approve the minutes. We'll move that to item number four instead of number five. And so that we can give him, allow him some time to get here. And for city staff, we have David Stroud from the Planning Department, Nicolette Feig from City Recorder, Frederick Donaldson is the Assistant Attorney, and Ken Young from our Community Development. All right. Again, we set aside time on every one of our meetings for public comment, so if there's anyone here from the public who would like to make comment on anything this evening, go ahead, we will open the time for you. Please keep your minute, comments to three minutes. Now, doesn't look like we have any money for comments, so we're going to close the public comment at this time, and we're going to go ahead and approve the minutes. Has anyone, has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes? Does anyone have any changes they need to make? We can turn it now. I'll go ahead and accept a motion for this, at this time, to approve the minutes. Commissioner Kilgore.
I move to approve the minutes, the Planning Commission minutes for the meeting on August 12th, 2021.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kilgore. Do we have a second?
Just to clarify, yeah, July 22nd.
Scratch that. Today's the 12th. Sorry about that. Yeah, I haven't, under those notes, okay. So I move to approve the Planning Commission minutes for the meeting held on 22nd of July, 2021.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kilgore. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
A second from Commissioner McConkey. Any question on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Okay. Next item is going to be a work session on the discussion or review on a proposed ordinance for regulating accessory dwelling units, ADUs, in Saratoga Springs. If I can get my finger to work, there we go. We'll turn that over to Planning Director Stroud.
Okay, thank you. I assume Ken and I will both kind of go back and forth maybe on some comments here.
Ken, can you hit your button so I know which one you are, and I'll turn you on?
As you know, state, state law change here recently, last legislative session that we're now mandated, we have to allow accessory dwelling units in the city. They gave us till October to have a code adopted, and they also gave us, up until then, we could go through, either allow them citywide in residential zones, or we could exclude up to 25% of the residential area in the city. And so what you have before you, just for discussion purposes tonight, is the draft ordinance we have. There are some stipulations that state code says we have to include, like, we can't, we have to give them at least one parking stall, some other things that we've incorporated into the code. But tonight, we'd like to hear your thoughts on what we have right now. Anything you'd like to discuss or bring up, we're more than happy to, to give you our two cents on it, and just go from there.
Okay.
I'll just, if I may, just add that he did mention that we have the October deadline. We have already plotted out our meeting schedules, so that the City Council will have time to have two meetings to do a review, as well as you have two meetings to do a review. So this will be the work session. Our next meeting, we will have an official item before you to give recommendation up or down on. We will not, we will highly discourage continuing or tabling the, the item, because that'll throw us off our schedule. So, you know, you make your recommendation as you will, but we are, we will be looking for a recommendation at our next meeting. Then City Council will take it on September 7th, and then have one more meeting before the deadline to finally approve it.
Okay. For this, I think everybody, we need, this isn't an important enough issue for our city that everybody needs to chime in on it. So I'm trying to decide, would it be best just to go through each item, or do we want to just do questions?
I think you just probably go down the line, ask, you know, give everyone a chance to say their thoughts, and maybe wrap it up, and...
Then, since I were waiting for Commissioner Anderson, I will start with Commissioner Ryan.
So, I appreciate that opportunity. I just had a couple of quick questions, more pertaining to holistically where we are pulling language from, if we are trying to match, you know, any recommended guidelines. Some of the things that were sent around to us were like from the League of Cities and Towns, and just some informational items. For me, it seems to make sense, as, there's kind of two overriding factors that make sense in my mind. One is to try to be as compliant with the law as we can, but also be, try, try to be as narrow with the law that was passed as we can. Just my own personal opinion there. So if I could get some background as to where we pulled some of the language definitions, et cetera, or if they were just generic, or, excuse me, organic from staff here, I would love to know that as well.
As far as that goes, more or less, in this code, and I've had a lot of experience with previous, a lot of it was, not a lot, but, you know, some of the things are already in my head. We do try not to reinvent the wheel either. We'll, we'll check to see what other cities are doing. I don't recall specifically where a lot of this came from, but it was pulled together from, you know, various sources. It wasn't, wasn't totally out of the blue on my part. And it went through with other staff, too. Other staff made comments, there's some changes to what I originally had, so it's kind of just a, a put together of several people's thoughts and ideas.
I appreciate that, and that is actually one of my, my follow-up questions, is the, the internal process that I went through with staff, so it sounds like there was multiple staff, or multiple sets of eyes in staff review.
Yep. Went out, what, two weeks ago, I think I sent it out, the draft, and then I was on vacation, some edits were made, and that's what you have right now before you.
Excellent, thanks. Those are, those are the bigger picture questions that I have for now. Mr. Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yeah, so I just had a few things. It looks like the city's probably going to be addressing the short-term rentals for regular homes, and so I know right now it's for not less than 30 days, but I'm just interested, do we think that it'll be, the city will allow short-term rentals for an ADU similar to, will it be the same regulations as a regular residence?
I, Fred, if you want to take that, do you have any direction yet on where we're going with the short-term ordinance?
So, it's my understanding that internal ADUs cannot be, at least can't be, for short-term rentals, for rentals less than 30 days.
Okay. Right, we do, I believe we do have that in the code right here.
It's, it's point 15. I'm thinking more in the future, when we adjust short-term rentals for the regular homes, because that's going to need to be addressed, just if that'll still apply, but that'll be a future point, I guess, when that goes through.
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I don't know the answer, and I don't know if it's been decided how, how this internal ADU legislation that was passed, and our ordinances will interplay with short-term rental ordinance and, and laws.
And then point 16 talks about home occupation. Let me see. It just says, shall be restricted to a home office which does not generate customer traffic. And I was just wondering on that one as well, if they can have a home business, like a nail salon or something in a home now, is it going to be, it looks like it's going to be different for an ADU.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know how I feel about that. I feel like if they can have a home business, in a regular home, they should be able to have it there. Maybe there should be a parking requirement if they want to have that type of home business, and maybe that'd be more in the home business code.
Well, I think it may come along the lines of, you know, that's just, somebody's just renting it, it's, they don't own the house structure that the, the ADU is in. Primarily, we're just saying, hey, you can have an ADU. If you want a business, great, it'd just be like a personal office-type business. So ADUs are going to be somewhat restricted in size, you're not going to be the whole house, you're going to be, you know, restricted to that. I know when, previously where I worked, we had the same, we actually didn't allow a home-based business in ADU. We thought there's, could be somewhat of a concern, you know, strangers coming to the house, you have family there, you have kids, we just thought, hey, you don't need to put a business in an ADU. Here, we'll at least allow it, the way it's written now, you can at least have maybe a personal office if you don't have anybody that does, that does visit.
That's fairly standard with cities that have already adopted an ADU ordinance, that they allow for home office, but nothing that will generate traffic. That's, that's usually the concern when we're adding an ADU to a neighborhood, is are we adding additional traffic to the neighborhood? My response to that is normally, no, you are not, because the home that allows, is big enough to allow for an ADU, was big enough, or is big enough, to house a larger family. And usually, an ADU in a single-family home is occupied by, well, the home is occupied by perhaps empty nesters, or, you know, an older couple, or a small family, and they have a big, empty space in their basement, so they can rent that out. Whereas perhaps 10 years ago, they had five teenagers, and, you know, so it really doesn't add additional traffic to the neighborhood. But when you add an element of bringing customers in, that, that is a different scenario.
Okay. And then the next one is on 18, for fines. It says, "The billing official or his designated shall determine the appropriate deadline for compliance." And I just didn't know if we wanted it that vague, to where, or if there'll, I mean, maybe there'll just be specific training for the billing official, but can they give a one-day deadline to one person, and then a one-year to the next person? So we might want to address what that deadline, or at least a standard for that deadline, have the billing official, I'll have all the leeway on that, so. And then my last, or I guess I got a couple more. The size of the home, which Director Stroud mentioned, we don't have, in, at least from what I read in our section, we don't have a percentage of the total that it can be. So if they have room for it, can they build anything that they want, as long as they allow the, or follow setbacks in building code?
You're talking, any size accessory dwelling?
Did we put a size in here? No, there's, there's not a limitation to the size of the accessory dwelling in it, as far as I know. That, you know, that normally follows if you're doing a detached accessory dwelling. But as far as how much of the home it can take, there's not a regulation on that.
So, in the city coun, oh, sorry to jump in. The City Council meeting, we, that was held a couple of weeks ago, they mentioned that right now we're focusing on internal ADUs. That's what this code is for, and then later, the staff will come back with a detached unit ADU code. So that'll, that's going to be separate.
There was enough concern, when we brought it forward to City Council, there was enough concern regarding the detached issue, and we felt with the timing and our schedule here, we don't want to get too bungled down with that, let's just deal with what the state is asking us to deal with, which is internal accessory dwelling units. And then we can, like you say, address it at a later time.
I'd like to just, in addition to what you're saying, so if there's no size requirement, I was just wondering, how do you define which is the primary, then? Is it just based on where the owner resides?
Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the owner can reside in any, I mean, I had instances where they actually lived in the accessory and rented out the house, you know, perhaps, you know, the value to rent was more to them, and they thought, as long as they're living on site, the owner's there. That's our primary concern, is that the owner does live there.
Can I make a comment, too? Under, under the legislation, it says that a municipality may not establish, basically, restrictions or requirements for the use of one internal accessory dwelling unit within a primary dwelling, including a restriction or requirement governing the size of the internal, or accessory dwelling unit in relation to the primary dwelling. So to answer the question about size, it can be any size, as long as it looks like it's, it's internal to the home.
And I was going to say the same, I'm just looking at a PowerPoint here that you can't see. Yeah, it says we can restrict the size in relation, of the ADU in relation to the SFD, single-family dwelling.
Perfect. And then my last point was just, as, just like we talked about a little before the meeting, as the detached conversation goes forward, to also potentially look into the tiny home, as well as detached, that Eagle Mountain has. So, because your detached ADU is different than the tiny home, but it would, they would overlap significantly, so. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagstaff. Commissioner Kilgore.
Okay. I had a, I had to get this. Yeah, I was actually going to ask, I think it's similar to, because in the summary presentation, it talks about, "In areas zoned for residential, municipalities may not establish any restriction or requirements, including size of the ADU in relation to the single-family dwelling, lot size, or street frontage." So I thought we did talk about lot size.
We can, there is a provision, we can restrict it to, we can say no to lots under 6,000 square feet.
Yeah, if you, if you go down a little bit further in the legislation, it's under It says, "A municipality may prohibit the creation of an internal ADU if the lot containing the primary dwelling is 6,000 square feet or less in size."
Right, okay, yeah, because I remember that, about the 6,000.
So, yeah.
So this lot size thing, then, it's not actually correct, in the summary, in the summary presentation.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to confirm that.
You know, I think the problem you get, when you get lot sizes smaller, obviously you get less street frontage. Because you're going to have a narrow lot at 6,000 feet.
Right.
You're, you're going to have parking for the house, you're going to have parking for the ADU. You know, you're running out of landscaping, you're, you know, just, do you want a sea of concrete or asphalt in the front yard? Probably not.
Right. Okay. And then, there was a question, I think, in one of the FAQs, will this help with, with the moderate, you know, moderate income housing? And the answer was not really sure. So I was wondering, what do other cities, yeah?
Well, in, in 2019, when the council adopted the three strategies, there were like 25 strategies, the city had to pick for their low to moderate income housing plan of the general plan, one of those strategies was accessory apartments. Now, how does this affect that? Now, everyone has to do that now? I don't know. But that was a direction that we were given, and a direction by the state to say, to help moderate income housing is have an ADU component. And so as of 2019, anyway, what we're doing now theoretically should help with, with that.
So in, with cities that have adopted this, I don't know if they, many have done it years ago, but has, is that what they're seeing? That it's helping?
ADUs are, you know, the market will determine what, what the cost is. I mean, if you're in a really nice house, nice area, you may say, yeah, $1,500 is not rented to you. Is that a modern, probably not.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, we, we don't regulate, nor do we, you know, mandate or have any restrictions on what rental, that's a private issue there. Theoretically, it should help, obviously, it's providing additional housing opportunities. One of our planners, Sarah Carroll, she does have an accessory apartment in her, her house, and she's had, I think she's had the same renters for three years, four years, something like that. So it's providing, obviously, a housing element that this person finds that suits them. And so I, I think ultimately, yeah, it will help. Will it be, you know, massively, you know, a big massive change? Probably not. But we are doing something to at least put that option out there for a different housing option.
Okay. All right. So about who to rent to, so what if a owner has an LLC, or, you know, like a, just a personal business or something, and then decides to rent to himself for a business that doesn't necessarily generate any traffic, because it's done online or something? Is that an issue, under what we're doing?
He still lives there?
Yeah, he still lives there, and he's renting to his own company. Or she.
Well, that sounds like a home occupation that he would need to get approval for. Regardless of the ADU, he would need to get approval for whatever business he has as a home occupation in his home. So that, that could be dealt with separately from the ADU.
Right, but how do we decide if it's an AD, because if he's trying to save money on rent, you know, for his company?
So you're saying he's using the ADU for his business?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's just like using part of your basement, or your garage, or whatever. So I don't see any difference there.
Okay. Well, I mean, there, I guess, there is a, there's a tax difference for the, for his company, or her company, there's a tax difference, and probably a legal difference as well. And I'm just wondering, does that impact the city in any way?
I don't think so. It affects how they deal with their business at their home, but I don't think it affects how the city looks at it.
Okay, so as long as it doesn't generate traffic, then an ADU can be used for businesses?
Some businesses that generate traffic can be approved in a home, not in an ADU, but in a, a single-family home.
Right, understood. So to decide whether, to determine whether a business generates traffic, is a traffic study required, then?
Not normally. There would have to be enough concern based on the area, or other public works concerns. I don't, normally, that wouldn't occur, but we would look at the nature of the business, and that would give us a determination.
When, when we do get a business license application, and there's a question, how many customers do you have visiting your, your business a day, or deliveries? Because that, because we have different classifications of home occupation, class one, class two, or class three.
Right.
And so we, we ask them, so it is on record, so if we do get a complaint, hey, this person has, you know, people night and day coming to their house, we pull it up, oh, they said zero, I mean, something's going on, then. And so we, we can, you know, enforce that way.
Yeah, because I was just thinking, this, not that this is what we were looking for, but as, as an example, is my wife's candy business, it's all online, but she needs, she uses a separate kitchen, because it's, you know, food. And so it would make sense for her to rent our basement, which has, which has an external, or has a, a separate access, and a separate kitchen. So then she could rent it to herself, or, you know, we could rent it to her business, and it doesn't generate any traffic. So I was just wondering if that would, that's, that's the kind of thing that people could do with an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I don't, like, like Ken said, I don't think it would affect us. It's still, you're still the resident of the entire home, you're not renting out to a separate family, you're still the same family then, at that point.
Right.
It'd be like renting an office space in my house. When I was in business, I rented my own office space, and that was, you know, for tax, tax reasons, but it's, it's just a, a home occupation, really, is all it is.
Yeah, no, it is, but I'm just wondering if it's going to impact it, no, I guess not, I guess it's all right.
No.
Yeah, there's no issue there. Okay. Just thinking outside my, outside. And then, okay, you answered the question about external or detached ADU, so, all right, that's it for me.
Thanks, Commissioner Kilgore. Commissioner Anderson, are you ready to go?
No, he asked my question. My question always is, it seems, my questions are always, what are other cities doing, what did we learn? So we picked out of those 25 options, those three ADUs were part of it, where there, what additional thought or discussion took place behind closed doors that informed that decision for ADUs to be one of those three? I guess that's just my question, just any other context you add, you would give us regarding that decision of that being one of them. I know we talked about it previously, I'm just trying to remember some of the conversation that was had around it.
Back in 2019, we did the initial, pick the three?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Check my memory now. I had, I don't remember any much of the details, other than we went to the council, we were required to pick three. Some cities had to pick four, based on their population, we were three.
I remember that.
And that was one, I think zoning for higher density was another one. I can't remember the third, third option now.
Okay. Was there any, was there any, like, looking over the fence at others that had done EDUs previously, or, and others? Was there any, was there any other learnings that we gleaned when choosing ADUs from other cities or other municipalities that?
I mean, this, this is my experience, you know, the state kind of has our hands tied what we could really do.
Sure.
And so there's not a whole lot of flexibility, I think, in what we've got going right now.
I, I might just add, so Dave and I both worked for the city of Orem, and we have a little experience with ADUs that Orem has had for a few decades now, or at least a couple of decades. I worked for the city of Pleasant Grove, and while there, we adopted an ADU ordinance. I worked for the city of Rapid City, South Dakota, we adopted an ADU ordinance. So this combined experience kind of helped us, and then having some steering language coming from the state, you know, was kind of the combined. But also, we did have a discussion with City Council, and they gave us some direction as to some of the things they would like to see in here. So it's really kind of a mixed bag of how this came together.
My experience with ADU in Orem, when I got to Orem, I replaced Ken in Orem. Our ADU ordinance, I think, lasted for another year, my first year I was there, and the council got rid of it for 10 years. And of course, Orem, UBU, a lot of accessory, a lot of illegal accessory, because of the college nature of that, people see that as a windfall for them to rent, rent to students. It was closed for 10 years. I always had a push to reopen it, and the council finally took back the, you know, the thought, well, let's revisit, and they opened it back up. The thought was, we're just going to get, you know, slammed with people asking for ADUs, it wasn't the case. ADUs are expensive, 40, we, I was told 30, 40, $50,000. And whether it's stick, whether it's built at new construction or remodel, I was told the price doesn't really change. It's, it's a very expensive undertaking to build an ADU, and I think it proved, in Orem there at least, you know, people just weren't, you know, banging the door down to get an ADU approval. They, they trickled in. There was, there wasn't the rush that people feared, thought was going to happen.
Same experience in Pleasant Grove and Rapid City, it's, it's just not a big tidal wave of, it's just another tool in our toolbox, but it's not a major impact thing.
It doesn't, it doesn't alleviate other, like you said, there's not a lot of impact, so it's not going to alleviate other kinds of high-density decisions we make within the city.
No.
Okay.
And with an ADU, yeah, you may be in a neighborhood where both your neighbors may have, and you think, oh, I'm being surrounded by ADU. You could be the only one for 30 houses, you never know, it's just, it's going to be a random thing. I'm sure you may get a couple of areas that may see, see more. I don't think, I don't know what would be in the city which would, would cause that to happen, like in Orem with, with UBU. Obviously, everyone, not everyone, but, you know, that was a big draw around UBU, was to have accessory apartments, and we even had a map, there, every ADU is plotted out in the city of Orem, and you see the concentration of red around UBU for obvious reasons.
Right.
I don't know what would, would cause a concentration in Saratoga Springs for ADUs. I think they'll be sparsely in the city.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Barton.
Most of my questions have been answered, so I just, one other one about, did you ever see either one of you, when it comes to the owner having to live in one of the dwellings? Is that, was that ever a problem, ever an issue? How was that enforced?
Yeah, there, there were times in my experience where, yeah, I mean, when we lived there, the owner was supposed to sign an affidavit, not, not every owner did, it was hard, you couldn't force them to sign it, but we liked to have them sign an affidavit, we'd record that affidavit at the county. But yeah, there were times where, yeah, we found out, hey, the owner's running out both, they don't live there. It's like any other part of the zoning code. Things will be enforced.
Right.
We, we get wind of it, we tell Brad, and he'll go through the enforcement process, no different than any other part of the code.
Would it mostly come from, like, a neighbor knowing that it's not the owner? Where did you, where did you find that out?
Yeah, I mean, and, and honestly, with, with the culture of Utah, where, you know, neighborhoods, for the most part, know everybody in the neighborhood, a lot of times, neighbors don't want to rat on their, like, like my old city manager, he said, I'm not going to tell you where they are, I know where they are, but I'm not going to tell you. These don't want to potentially ruin friendships, things like that. And typically, that's the only way we'd find out, is if a neighbor complains about it.
Otherwise, if, if there's parking problems, or noise problems, that's something that may cue us into, hey, maybe this is being abused, you know? But yeah, you don't always know.
So when it comes to the parking thing, is it, because that probably, I could see that being almost the number one concern, right, with these type of things, if you're renting them out, and that sort of thing? Is it, just remind me, is it one extra parking space they're supposed to have if they have an ADU?
At least, one, one, we have to require one parking stall.
Okay.
And right now, we, we have it behind the front setback line, not within the sideyard setbacks. Yeah, it's located behind the front step, number nine here, located behind the front setback line, not in the sideyard, setback due to a street. On-street parking doesn't count. No, we want to get the cars off.
Right, we want them on the street.
Most ADUs, I, I, it's probably a fair statement, most ADUs, you'll have one car, maybe two. Younger couples, maybe newly married, maybe will have two, but, you know, it's not like you're going to be raising, you know, hopefully, you know, not raising high school kids that are going to have cars and they, I mean, it could happen, yes. But I think it's just for a, a very limited segment of the population.
What I see now, because obviously there's, they're out there, right? It's usually bigger, the, the larger properties that have these on them. So I haven't seen parking be a big issue, but obviously if we let more come in, it could be, but it always is an issue. I feel like everywhere, right?
And you know the thing about parking? You know, you, you could have a family of 10 living next to you that has, you know, four kids that all have a car. Parents have a car.
Yeah.
You know, you could have an ADU next to you with a, you know, a retired couple and they're renting to, you know, some, there could be two cars there.
Two cars.
You just, you just never know.
Right.
Commissioner Barton, could I ask a question, Ted, next, along with yours? So clarification, when we say one extra parking stall for the, for the dwelling unit, is it in addition to what's already there with the primary?
If, yeah, the, the, the dwelling still is required by code to have two enclosed stalls. Now, if you, if a homeowner says, well, I'm going to give my accessory apartment one of those stalls, you still have to come up with another covered stall for the house.
Okay, so it's in addition?
Yeah, so I think unless you have a three-car garage, I think you'd probably guarantee that, you know, there's going to just be an outside stall next to the garage, most likely. You know, you pull in the driveway, pull around, concrete pad type thing, that's where the park.
Okay, so it's, it's not in addition to the existing structure? It's, the existing structure is required to at least?
Yes.
And then i- if there's an ADU, there has to be one for that? But if they already have a four-car garage, then, then that already meets it then?
Right.
Yeah, okay, right, that makes sense.
Or a three-car, they can say, you've got the outside garage stall.
Okay.
As long as the garage is being used for vehicles. Now, if it's all storage, then no, that doesn't meet the requirement.
Okay.
Do we need to put that in the code about the storage part? Because I don't think it's in there.
That's, did you say about storage?
Yeah, if, if the garage is being used for storage. I don't recall reading that part in there.
Well, on C, it says, I'll just read it, garage space shall not be counted towards required parking unless the minimum of two enclosed spaces are provided to serve the needs of the primary dwelling. And so that's what it's talking about. You're, you're serving the needs of the dwelling for parking.
I don't know if that would be in the code. You know, that then opens up the door. I mean, say you have a house where you don't have an accessory apartment. I mean, I guess you have every right to use your garage as storage for your own personal items. We're not going to go around and say, get that out of there and park your cars in there.
Well, but what you also have is a driveway in front of the two-car garage, so you can park two cars in front of the garage. So that's still kind of covering it. So we're saying, well, that is for the primary dwelling. So you do need a, a, a.
An extra ride aside or?
Basically, what this does, it says, when a builder builds a house, you have to have a two-car garage. I would choose after that, without accessory apartments up to the owner. But you can't build a house with, with no garage, basically.
Right.
Thanks, Ken, that was, that clarified a lot for my questions. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner Barton. Commissioner McConkey?
Thank you. Just, we'll just talk about the, the parking again real quick. I think that, by the way, I read through, as I read anyway. When I started looking at all this, I started jotting down everything that I wanted to, I felt like we needed to see and address. And then I, and then I read through what's being proposed and I was like, well, I don't even know why I wasted my time with that. So I appreciate the thoroughness. Obviously, you have a lot of experience in this and as far as the parking, I think it would be good to include the verbiage in addition to the minimum for, required for the single-family dwelling to clarify that, where it currently just says at least one additional.
Well, does, does C, covered garage space shall not be counted towards required parking, that's the minimum of two. We already say the minimum of two enclosed is provided to serve the needs.
Where are you reading?
Uh, 9C. I think it still implies, I mean, the, the code is already there where it says you have to provide two covered, two enclosed stalls for, for the, for the house.
I, maybe a reference to the code that, that says that I, it just wasn't clear to me. I mean, the, the question that came to my mind was, well, does that mean if I have four parking spaces, is this particular verbiage in here saying, now I got to have five, even though I only need three? If that makes sense? Something that kept coming back to my, my mind on this is, what's, other than satisfying the state requirements, what's the intent behind creating a ADU or allowing ADUs?
Well, again, because in 2019, the council chose that strategy. So at some, I was actually working on a code probably a year and a half ago. And then we got wind that this may be on the next, that upcoming legislative session, so I put it on hold. Say, well, I'm not going to do all the, because it could totally change or we're going to be mandated to do whatever.
Yeah.
And so it was on hold. So I was already given the direction by the council that we were to come up with an ADU ordinance.
And I think it's a great move. And I think, in my mind, I think just recognizing the, what, maybe what the benefits are going to be. The state kind of took the approach and then, under the umbrella, in the name of, of creating more affordable housing was a big push for all this, right? And I think there's some great opportunity here, of course. And I'm, I'm glad, honestly, that we're doing this. And yeah, I lost my train of thought with that one, so I might come back to that one, but. Anyway, moving on, I apologize. Separating the external from the internal ADUs. Is this section related just, referring just to internal accessory dwelling units?
The, the code has this written here.
19.28.3, the one that we're looking at tonight.
No, our numbers are, numbering is off on this. Are you looking under general provisions or?
Yes. Yes, under general provisions.
Okay, what number?
I, I'm just wondering if, if there's anything, I, I don't remember. I'm just scanning through this and I'm not catching it. If this is intended to be addressing just internal ADUs or if this is just?
Yeah, right now, it's written just for, within the, the primary dwelling. There's a lot of provision right now. We could work on that down the road.
Yeah, I, I wasn't seeing where it was.
If you look under definitions, number one, accessory dwelling unit means a residential unit that is located on the same lot as a detached, single-family dwelling unit and is internal or attached to.
That's where it was, yeah.
Detached, single-family dwelling.
Okay.
So we might expand that.
Yeah.
And, and add to this section at a later date to allow for the detached.
Right.
In, in the Beacon Point community plan, you can do detached, except ADU. But it has to be part of a garage or a shed type structure. It can't be, at least in.
Not a standalone.
In Beacon Point only, it can't be standalone. Has to be tied to something else.
Okay, so is this, can this going to conflict or get confused with any existing detached ADU ordinance that we have?
We, we don't.
We don't have anything, okay.
Beacon, right now Beacon Point's the only development you can do an ADU. Come October 1st, that'll be, that'll change, but right now, it's just Beacon Point.
Okay, and it's, I'm not familiar with Beacon Point, sorry.
Around the, the.
Around the temple.
Okay, so is it called an ADU, the detached accessory?
Yep, it's, it's written specific. Again, a community plan, you, you're writing site-specific zone.
New definition then in the community plan?
Yeah, you're writing site-specific zone just for them. And so they came up with language to, to do external as well.
Okay.
Tie it as part of a garage or a shed, something, but.
Yeah. So I guess, looking at it just from a, being a little picky here, I guess. Because to me, definitions is everything, of course. Defining it differently in the city code is not going to create a conflict then with Beacon Point?
No.
If they have a definite, their own definition for.
Right.
That covers the detached.
Right.
Okay, thanks. Including all of the zoning areas in, under the general provisions? Correct me if I'm wrong, we're, but I'm gathering that we're including the R2836, the MF10, 1418, MR and.
Yeah, it's all written right under the first two lines under general provisions.
Right, and the, the purpose for including that is because in those zones, someone can have a 6,000 square foot lot.
You, you could still do single-family in a multifamily zone.
Right.
So if that is there. This doesn't give the right to say, well, I've got a condo in the MF18, I'm going to put it in.
Right, we're just including those because someone can build a 6,000 or have a 6,000 square foot lot. Okay? We talked about that already. And number 11. The word accessible in the, in the building department means handicap accessible, but that's not what we're referring to, correct? I'm just clarifying here. In the electrical code, it does not meet that, mean that, but. And then a question about location of the entrance. Are we wanting to require locations? That it has to be on the side or?
State code can't, said you can't dictate where the location is.
So can the location be, I've seen them sometimes like inside the garage. It's separate, I mean, it goes straight to the basement, but it's in the garage. Is that what they're talking about? Like, they can do that?
The building code won't allow that.
I mean, some, some cities, you may say, well, we don't want two doors on the front of a house, it may look like a duplex then.
Right.
Uh, I think in Orem, we had, you couldn't do it on the side adjacent to a street, if I remember.
Yeah, so number eight.
The state code is allowing to, it's, that they can put the second door anywhere?
Well, number eight does specify, uh, single-family parents. So the primary dwelling shall be architecturally compatible with adjacent, single-family homes and not appear as a structure with two dwelling units. So having two front doors, that's what that's referring to.
Okay.
So inside a garage would be okay, type of thing, side of the house.
But it doesn't mean it can't be in the front. I mean, they may be able to do something so it comes from the side.
So you can't see both doors from there.
From the front, it doesn't appear to be two doors.
Have like a, a accessory entrance or something like that?
Well, and, and there are some homes that have a second door by their garage, you know? And that's not the main door, but it doesn't look like it's two separate entrances necessarily, so. I did want to point out the separate entrance thing and, and Fred, I don't know if you want to talk about that. It's something we're looking into, whether or not we can require a separate entrance. And I think so far, I don't know, Fred, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, I, I watched the wrap-up from the League of Cities and Towns and have read a lot of materials and, but as I read the code, it, it's kind of unclear, because it says, a municipality may not establish any restrictions or requirements for the construction or use of one internal accessory dwelling unit within a primary dwelling, including a restriction or requirement governing the size of the IADU in relation to the primary dwelling, the total lot size or the street fronters. So the, the question is, if we impose a requirement that, that there be a separate entrance, is that imposing a construction requirement on, on the owner? And so if it is, then it would be in violation of, of that part of the code. If it's not, then it wouldn't be. And if it's required by building codes or fire codes, then it also would not be a violation because we can require compliance with those codes. So we're still looking into that, trying to figure out whether we can do that.
Also, number four, living areas. We have expanded the verbiage a little bit on that. I checked with our building official, Mark Chesley, on the definition of a kitchen and a bathroom. What, what exactly is that? And so what we're doing with that is saying, as you have it written, and I've got some other copies with the new language here, we can pass around, but it's, I'll just read it, it's fairly quick. The ADU shall have living areas separate from the principal dwelling unit, including a sleeping area, comma, as well as facilities to comprise a kitchen and a bathroom as defined by the International Residential Code. Now, in the, in, we don't necessarily need to put that in what the International Residential Code says, but looking that up. Bathroom means a group of fixtures including or, or excluding a bidet, consisting of a water closet, and that's an old term, but it's still in the code. That refers to a toilet. Consisting of a toilet, lavatory, and bathtub or shower. Such fixtures are located together on the same floor level. So that tells us what a bathroom is. A kitchen, however, is not as specific. It just says, kitchen shall mean an area used or designated to be used for the preparation of food. So it doesn't tell us that you have to have a stove or a refrigerator.
I believe the National Electrical Code does define kitchens. I think that's what we typically drawn from.
Okay.
Should be the 2020.
National Electrical Code.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good to know.
2020 NEC. Requires, if I remember right, requires a countertop that's at least 30 inches wide, I believe.
Well, that, that may get more specific than we want to, you know? Because would it be sufficient if there was a sink, a mini fridge, and a microwave?
Permanent cooking facilities. So it could be a permanently mounted microwave? Maybe you glue a hot, a hot plate to the top of the counter or something.
So I'm not, I'm not sure how specific we want to get on this, you know? I mean, we're, we're really getting down to the nitty-gritty and, so anyway. Just wanted to let you know, we're doing a little bit more with that one.
I, I think, I think what you've done is great, really. I do, and even relying on, on where this is very much a, you know, building department thing as far as the, what's included, what you can and can't do, kind of, you know, code-wise, I think, relying on the, the definitions and so forth in there, I think, my opinion is pretty safe. I did want to, what, what were you talking about again?
We were talking about external entrance, separate entrances.
Yes. So I know in at least two jurisdictions I've worked at, as soon as, well, their definition, I guess, of ADU included a separate entrance and no connection between the main residence and accessory dwelling unit. As soon as it was connected with a door or an opening, it was no longer considered technically an ADU. And I wonder if that's something similar that we would consider?
I, I don't know if we'd go that route. I mean, you can put a fire-rated door that separates the two, lockable on both sides.
I believe the state had something.
Whatever the building code is for a separate unit, you know, separation. I don't think, as a homeowner, I wouldn't want, probably wouldn't want that anywhere that I can't access. I have to go outside to access it. I don't think that would be something that we would probably.
Separate but not accessible.
Include.
So where do we, where do we draw, I guess, in my mind, where do we draw the separation between, say, finishing a basement with a full kitchen and then calling it an ADU?
Well, it'd be whatever the building code, as far as your separation would go with the, because it is now, so you're obviously familiar with the building code. You know, I have my layman's access to it from previous experience that, yeah, it was a separate, independent living unit. It had to meet a, you know, firewalls, fire rating, no separation, or excuse me. If there's a door, it had to be 30-minute, probably fire-rated door, that type of thing.
If it's a duplex?
Well, you know, a house with an accessory apartment. Does it have to meet those standards?
Yeah, so.
I don't know what the current building code says about that.
Yeah, if, when, when you're talking about apartments, that's a totally different sphere, if you will. And it does require the one-hour separation or two-hour, one-hour separation. And I think allowing the, the ADUs in a, in a single-family dwelling is kind of like staying out of the apartment requirements of the IBC or the duplex requirements of the IRC. It's where you don't have to create that fire-rated separation as long as, in theory, the owner is living there and has some element of control and so forth. And so it's kind of like, to me, the ADU allowance is kind of squeezing this kind of duplex scenario in without requiring all the same things, which I, I'm not opposed to at all. But I, to me, I feel like it's good to, especially when you start doing plan reviews or inspections and someone's putting in a full kitchen. When, when is the city going to call this an accessory dwelling unit? Is it, as soon as they want to rent it? Or what's kind of the distinguishing factor?
The word separate that we have in number four, the ADU shall have living. The word separate that we have in number four, the ADU shall have living areas separate from the principal dwelling unit. And then defining the sleeping.
So if you have a basement, living room, and you have an upstairs living room, which I have in my house, we've got a separate, I haven't installed a stove, permanent cooking yet, but I've got, other than, I don't have an, I don't have any intention of making it into an ADU. But I, I, in theory, could create a separate entrance and all of that, and then turn that into an ADU. But what, at what point do, do we no longer call it a, just a basement that has all of the living, everything?
It's open to the rest of the house.
Yeah, well, somebody could certainly have an, it's very common where someone could have a second kitchen in their basement.
Yeah.
You see it more in bigger houses, obviously, because the kids, my mom says, kids eat all your snacks or everything down there. Certainly, yeah, there's nothing says you can't, you can have two bathrooms in the house, you can have two kitchens in the house. The moment you want to make it an accessory dwelling unit, then whatever building code's applying, thankfully, we're just doing zoning. We don't do the building code, obviously. Whatever billing code, an IRC code, and whatever applies, they're going to have to meet that at that point.
And I guess that's my question is where do we, where do we consider it an ADU?
Well, and once it's a rental.
Is it as soon as I shut the door? Or is it as soon as I sign a contract with someone and they want to rent the downstairs, even though they can still?
Your construction can define it as an ADU, but you're not using it as an ADU. But it's when, when you use it as an ADU that we get into that. You can close the door, you can lock it, you can open it, or maybe there's not a door. But if you want to have an ADU, there's going to be a separation between that unit and the rest of the house.
Okay.
Walls and the door.
So is that where we want to distinguish as soon as there's a separation between the two? I'm, the reason why I'm kind of pushing this is because the vagueness. I've been working with contractors for almost 30 years and a lot of homeowners and so forth and so on. And so in, when there's vagueness, they always will go with whatever site is going to be most friendly to them, of course. If there's a clear line in the sand, then they know exactly what's expected and they know what, exactly what, you know, what the ordinance requires and so forth. And then there's, it also provides some, some teeth, if you will, if, if there ever, heaven forbid, needs to be some, some code enforcement. Otherwise, if someone's renting, or do we ask them for some pay stubs of rentals? Or that, does that make sense? What's, are they really, are they just staying in the basement? Or is it an ADU? Yeah.
I really think it is the renting aspect of it. If you, if you look at the code under 10, 8, 85.5, we've talked about how we're now defining what an internal ADU is. But, but it also talks about what a rental dwelling is, and that's that definition there. And, and so I think it is when, when it's starting to be rented out is when it becomes, you know, applicable. Because, because you could have something constructed as an ADU and you're not renting it out.
Right, but what says that it is an ADU?
Because isn't it, isn't it an either or then? So I would read it as either or to say that it's not been previously permitted. So at the start, if you're declaring that, hey, this is how I'm going to build it and have it, then you're getting the permitting for that.
And you've got to register with the city as well.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that you're renting it at that point, but you've, it's been permitted by the city, right? And all that has been done. And then, once you start the registration and say, hey, this is renting, then, then it's official. So I think it's like an either, I'm reading it as an, and I could be wrong completely, but I'm kind of reading it as an either or. Like from the get go, if you build it, declare it, it's an ADU, right? But you're not using it as such. But then you, there's, it comes to a point in time when you can, once you say, hey, we're registering this, we're going to, we're going to rent this.
But so what about the other direction then? Someone who did not build the building, you know, the primary residence as an ADU, but now wants to, you know? So these people who are, who are trying to comply with the code in order to make it an ADU. So I understand what your question is, because for example, my basement has an access to the outside. It's got a kitchen, it's got a bath, you know, all that stuff. But it just has an, there's no door from the, when you come down the stairs, there's no door there. It's just an opening. So if I were to, I think, you know, the code has changed quite a bit, or not code, but the, the thinking has evolved quite a bit where you no longer have to have a separate electrical panel, you no longer have to have separate air, you no longer have to, I mean, I think it said two inch, just a two inch separation with drywall, basically. So does that mean that if I just simply install a door, like a physical door instead of an opening, then now it's an ADU?
Well, it, it's, it's all going to boil down to, you're, if you want an AD, you have to meet whatever the current building code is to, to, to have a legal ADU. And you've got to register with the city. So the city knows that this, and someone calls, say, say one's built, someone sells the house. Now the realtor, real estate agent calls up, hey, this house has, has an apartment, is illegal. We can look in our list, say, yeah, that's on our list, that's a legal accessory apartment.
Yeah, that's my understanding, is like you'd have to register at some point so that then there's a file in the city, then that's declarative, right? You're making that transition.
Yeah, I mean, those people that have ADUs now, illegal ADUs now, they, to make them legal, they've got to meet whatever zoning code requirements you have, whatever, and whatever applicable building code requirements apply.
And it's probably illegal because they're renting it. Is that, is that what?
Yeah, because right now, well, most likely, well, I'm not saying most likely, you know? Obviously, if a building permit came in with, someone said had a, a separate kitchen, everything in their basement, you know, firewalls, all of that, building department would not give them a building permit if it's a separate, designed and constructed at that point as a separate ADU. If it was just a kitchen down in the basement, free flow access, that sort of thing, they would do it. But if it was clearly on plans to be as code for a separate ADU, the building department would, would reject it.
There's no separation requirement. So I, I do plan reviews and there's, the only way, when we get a basement plan that has no connection between the basement and the main house, to us, that's a trigger that they're setting it up as an ADU. And of course, that's Draper's requirements. That's their definition, the line that they draw. But I get plenty of submittals. They, they give as little information as possible. And they just want to get the permit, they get it done. But there's, there's no way for, for the city to, I hate the word, regulate, to empower the residents to, you know, to comply with the, the ordinance.
Look, we're, we're not going to catch all of the situations. There's going to be a lot of remaining illegal situations because they haven't registered or they haven't met the code, whatever. So we'll follow up on those that we hear about if there's some code enforcement that needs to be followed up on. But otherwise, there's going to remain some of those that we'll never know.
And I agree. I, I feel like just having a clear line, what separates, just talking, you know, an addition or a basement finish, a mother in law apartment or whatever, at what point does it become an ADU physically? And that draws a clear line in the sand to make it, to make it clear.
I feel like our statements about following building code and about having separate living areas separated from the primary dwelling, that, that pretty much, that sets us in that motion.
I'm almost done here.
I was just going to say too, I, I think, going back to what we discussed earlier, this being housing option, I think that, I think the state code at least was drafted to go both directions so that new, new construction could be, have an ADU and also so that existing buildings could be converted into ADUs for that housing, housing purposes. So.
Well, with the, the price of housing going up, and I mean, I've got one son already moved to Texas, it'd be nice to have him here, but where would he live?
Yeah.
He could live in your.
I think it's a great move.
Your basement.
I do. He did.
Yeah.
They did, I should say. So in 18, I wonder if we just change this, just a little technicality. Talks about failure to complete the registration of an existing accessory apartment. We might change the word apartment to accessory dwelling unit, just for uniformity. And then also in 18. After the fine is assessed, the building official or his designation shall determine the appropriate deadline. I wonder if we, rather than using the word appropriate, we use reasonable. Might make it a little easier for the building official to have some clout there.
Could I, could I ask a follow up question, Commissioner?
Yes.
So that, I think two commissioners have hit on that and I didn't catch it, but that is interesting. So why, why do we have that leniency in there versus like what Commissioner Wagstaff had pointed out? That we just set like a hard and fast rule? Because maybe that day he wakes up and he's happy and he's had his coffee and the next day he wakes up and he's angry because the neighbor's dog pooped in his lawn or something. And so he's not giving, that, it's always hard to ask, like in, in construction, it's always hard to ask favors, right? From an owner, like you always feel like you're asking favors at times versus if I knew a hard and fast rule and there's clarity, then I know from day in or month to month that that, and I think that's maybe what you were, what you were saying. And Commissioner McConkey has touched on it a little bit as well. So is there reasoning behind that?
Well, I think giving some flexibility to the building official, I think, can be important because you've got a lot of different types of situations they might be dealing with. You know, maybe you're dealing with a widow who has a lot of difficulty in meeting, and maybe she needs some more time to come into compliance. Whereas someone who's built a new home and, you know, you, you just can't find a good reason why they need more time, you know? You, you clamp down on that a little bit more. So I, I don't see a problem with giving some leniency.
But then I feel like that becomes very objective, right? Like it really is, again, up to the official. Like they feel bad for somebody, so okay, give them more time, where they don't really know the situation of everybody. I mean, you, you can say you do necessarily, but I feel like then you're making exceptions. So where do you stop making the exception? Like with who, right? Or whom? At what, at what point do we say, okay, well, this person gets this exception, but this person doesn't because, like you said, because they are feeling a certain way or there's a situation that they think is different than this situation? I think there's a lot of gray area there where it might get tricky. I don't know.
And I appreciate the, the response, Ken. And I, you know, extenuating circumstances, right? Is what you're trying to, to recognize and have some flexibility around. And so I don't, maybe more than just, you know, appropriate or desirable or reasonable, whatever language you put in there, like perhaps there is a timeframe and then there's a process by which they can request for an extension. And there's a timeframe associated around that, just food for thought. And then that way, we're not, you know, how, we, we're not sitting there trying to judge just how sad their story is or just how extenuating their circumstance is. There's some, there's some clarity around it.
And I'll just throw out this example of, of what happened recently. When a plat is approved, they have two years to record the plat. We had a, have an instance down the south end of town where the sewer capacity is, is at what we consider full. There's obviously leeway, there's more room in the sewer lines, but we have to have that, that flexibility there. We had a developer come in where his plats expired in June. But he wanted to record these three plats because people, we told developers that, hey, we told them in February, I believe it was, there's a deadline coming up in a July where you need to get these plats recorded so you can still use the sewer system in the city. Well, this guy came, came to us and, and, you know, well, I, you know, I'm getting all these things together and, you know, we, we kind of had to hold to the hard and fast line of you had two years to do this. And now you're coming here at the 11th hour, trying to, to do whatever. And we ultimately, we had to tell them no, because the code says you had two years to do this. You failed to do it, you've got to start over. Maybe that's somewhat cruel, I don't know. But it, it certainly was, you know, black and white in the code that that was, was the deadline.
I'll make two comments on that too. The first one is it made your job easier because you were able to say, this is the code. And in this situation, the building official can just say, this is the code, this is the deadline. And the other one is if they need flexibility, it can be something similar to the LeVar Christiansen property when that guy came in. And like, he just asked for an extension, even with the complexity of that project, we gave it to him, you know? And so if they need an extension, they can just ask for it. But at least the building official can say, look, you have 60 days. And then he's not the bad guy for it being subjective. He just says, I'm pointing to the code.
Yeah, it's well said. So I think that's worth considering.
Well, when you have an, an ADU being rented, someone's obviously living there and using the ADU. And to kick them out is probably not going to be a, provide some positive.
Clean and easy process.
Publicity to them.
I was thinking we could.
So certainly a timeframe is necessary. And I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, if they only have two, if they don't have enough parking spaces, they're going to need another one to come into compliance potentially, and that's going to take some time, but 60 days, I think, is reasonable.
And it could be that they're an illegal situation that just cannot comply.
Yeah.
Right.
And sorry. Say goodbye to your renter and.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
That's better.
And in that case, the, the reasonable timeframe would be stop, I guess. I don't know.
We could make a killer reality show like ADU Patrol, Saratoga Springs.
Or anywhere probably, right?
Snitches get stitches, the first episode, right?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you answering my questions and, oh, I did have one other question. Impact fees related to ADUs?
Good question.
There really is no larger impact.
I mean, you have no sewer, no water.
You don't have larger traffic coming into the community. You don't have additional use on the lines because they've already been set up to cover the use of that home as is. So if there's a family of 10 there or there's a retired couple with a young family, you're not exceeding the, the use that was planned for.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McConkey. I had a couple of questions. One of them was already asked, the state, does the state code allow us to require a separate entrance? So it looks like that's kind of still in flux. The two year time period to comply, from what I'm understanding from the code, it looks like we're going to be super lenient when this first takes effect. But maybe we could leave the two year in there for the building official to use later on. We're still being somewhat lenient on there. So if we do have somebody that comes up six months to a year after the code goes into effect, that we find them, that they've been renting out, maybe they could have, I don't know. Anyway, that's just a thought, my thought. I had a question about the fine, whether $500 was sufficient, but I guess that's really more of city council?
What do you want it to be?
Well, part of my thinking was if they had two years to comply and they're getting $1,000 a month out of the rental unit, they could go 23 months and kick the person out and, and only be out 500 bucks potentially. But maybe, I think really, ultimately, that's going to be a city council question.
Yeah. Can I say something about that?
Sure.
Because I, I was thinking something similar. It would seem to me if they, if this is, is this a one time fine? Or is this a monthly fine or something like that? It would need to be significant enough that someone wouldn't be profiting by just simply paying the fine and continuing to be in violation.
It's based on the deadline. And so if there's a deadline worked out with the, the building official, say 60 days, okay? It's, it's not a 500 every day. It's, okay, the next, then it's written in as such. Okay, if you don't meet the next deadline, you're fined now. There's also language there that says, may result in a fine of 500. I mean, the last thing that building official wants to do is find somebody.
He's got better things to do than to.
Yeah, but I think there's an out there of may.
Yeah.
Well, and the last line there says, an additional fine may be assessed for each deadline that is not met.
Yeah, the, the door's open for the building official to be a nice guy. And he is, by the way, so.
Yes, he is.
My last comment or question is about how we're, existing HOAs who have no ADU provisions in their agreements with their, how's that going to be handled? Does the state code supersede it? Does it just wipe it completely out, which I think is somewhat unfair if it does?
Well, basically, that's correct. State code will say that, sorry, HOA, this is the state law now. However, they have made a provision that up to 25, excuse me, 25% of the residential areas in the community can be exempted from this requirement. So that's one thing that we're doing right now. We have sent out communication to all of the HOAs in, in the city to ask them, do they currently prohibit or permit? And what is their reaction to the state and what the city's trying to do? So the city council's asked us to do this so that they can make a determine, excuse me, a determination if there are areas of the city they want to exempt from this, which, you know, could be some of the older neighborhoods that. which, you know, could be some of the older neighborhoods that have HOAs that have been pretty strong about not allowing ADUs, it could be that the city council will exempt out some of those neighborhoods, so we're in the process of gathering that information.
So the city can exempt twenty-five percent of the city, is that the?
The residential.
The residential.
Oh, the residential part of it, okay, okay.
Basically, of the areas that we're designating, right, allowing.
Personally, I'd rather see it just across the board, but.
Thanks. Saratoga Springs.
The next, I kind of want to follow up on the HOA thing, if the city does exempt the HOA from, because it's in their agreement, is that, does that make the city, we're going to be the enforcing agent at that point? I guess it would.
As an HOA?
Well, if it's part of our twenty-five percent that we're exempting, does that put us in a position that we're going to have to enforce it, or is it the HOA?
It's, well, no, we've said that that neighborhood doesn't have to permit it, and that's because, we've made that determination, because we appreciate the neighborhood and the CCNRs that they have in place, which have made it so that that's not a good idea for that area, so we'll let the HOA of that neighborhood continue to cover that.
Okay.
It would be a civil matter.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I had on this. Any other comments from the commission on this?
Yeah, I do have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
So I think on the definitions and the title of the code, we should probably change it from accessory dwelling units to attached accessory dwelling units, because there's going to be a subsequent code for detached accessory dwelling units, and even right now, on the Saratoga Springs website, the definition includes part of a detached garage or accessory building, so we're counteracting ourselves right now already, and so we need to have this code be attached, and then in the definition one, instead of being accessory dwelling unit, have it be attached accessory dwelling unit, and then in the subsequent code, it can be a detached accessory dwelling.
Maybe what we do is follow the lead of the state, which, in their code, are calling it IADU, or internal.
Yeah, I think we should match the state.
So we can go through and just change it to IADU instead of ADU.
That's a good idea.
Are you talking about the definition that you see there?
On the website, I guess you've changed, is that definition changed? Do you just change that?
It's not redlined, but I believe so, yes.
Because on the website right now, that's live, it just shows, it says part of a detached garage or accessory building, so.
Yeah, I think we probably ought to go ahead and do the definitions for IADU now, as opposed to having to come back and change it all again later.
Yeah.
And we'll just add the external later. But the other definition, I think, how we define what an ADU is, is good, maybe we need to add an additional definition for IADU.
I think if we just add the I there, that definition still works.
Well, but there's verbiage in there for attached.
Or attached to a detached, single-family dwelling, so, in other words, a detached, single-family dwelling is not a duplex, or, you know, something of that nature, it's just a regular, single-family dwelling, that's what a detached, single-family dwelling, so maybe it's attached to that, maybe, you know, they could even build an ADU to their side yard if they have enough setback area, and it's attached to the home, that's okay, they can do that.
Oh, all right, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, this is changing the definition.
Yeah.
We're taking quite a bit out, actually, of what the definition is.
All right, if there's no other comments, we'll move on to commissioner comments, anyone have any comments they'd like to make?
I'd like to just say thanks for this.
I'd like to acknowledge we have two Orem alumni, is there a trend here, and what does that mean?
Means we were trained and then came here.
We're on track to be Family City USA two-point-oh.
Let's just hope we're not Orem two-point-oh.
Bring the best and help us avoid the worst.
Yeah, exactly. Director's report.
I do not have anything tonight.
Do we have a, need to go into a closed session this evening?
We do not.
Okay, then we will stand adjourned until, oh, we already, we did the minutes, we swapped those, so we could give more time for Commissioner Anderson. Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Okay, well, this meeting will stand adjourned until August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, thanks.